This is contemplating a 5% increase. The regional bus information just went out this, this week actually, I believe it just went out. Again, this is preliminary. This is going to be driven off of the number of people that sign up and where they're coming from. We believe, based on projections of where people are coming from, that we are actually going to need to add a second Northern Bus, you know, into the mix. So our current Northern Bus is very near capacity. They can only hold a certain number of students. If we get more students subscribed than that, then we need to add a second bus at that point in time. That's what we believe is going to happen and we budgeted accordingly for that. That'll be proved out when we get all the, you know, deposits and sign. You know, sign-ups back from the parents, but that's what we believe is going to happen with that.
The Northern Bus is the one that serves Hudson, so that's the major reason.
Yeah.
More core talent.
And we're tracking exactly the budget right now?
Currently, we're tracking right on, right on budget, yes, at this point in time.
So this is pretty predictable? Or are we?
Well, once, once people, once people sign up, it's pretty predictable because we collect the money, you know, that we collect the money that they owe. This is a projection based on, you know, graduating seniors, incoming sixth graders, and a guesstimate of how many of those, you know, sixth graders are going to be riding, you know, riding the bus is what it comes down to. We were off considerably last year, considerably fewer people signed up than, you know, than we expected. We've refined our estimate at this point in time, but that's, you know, that's all we can do at this point. These next two line items, this in-kind transportation, in-kind MTRS, these are numbers that we receive from the state at the end of the year and they are an in-and-out type transaction. So this is, represents, in-kind transportation is the benefit of the Marlboro Buses. You'll see it down on the expense line down below. And then MTRS relates to the retirement system. This is a plug number that we get at the end of the year, that's why you don't see it in there. Since it comes in and goes right out, it doesn't have an impact on it, but it does factor into what the actuals were for the, for the 14, 15 years, so that's why we have them there. You're also going to see the CAM charge settlement number that came through this year, the 966 number that we've talked about, coming through on the income side. Again, that is a one-time settlement, so we don't expect anything this year and obviously didn't have any CAM settlements in previous years. So that's the income side of the equation. Spend a little bit of time on the salaries. So if tuition is what we have to get right on the income side, salaries is what we need to get right on the expense side. No ifs, ands, or buts about this. So picking up on-
Tom?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I know you're moving on to expense. I'm trying to do the math though, and the total income. So am I reading that correctly that we're anticipating $700,000 less than income next year?
Yeah, don't forget, we got $966,000 in CAM charges that we're not going to have coming through again next year. Yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you. Let's try to figure out the math there. Go.
You could ask students.
Yeah, try to.
And again, it's a little difficult to compare this number because this number right here includes these two items that we get at the end of the year as an in-and-out. So it's better to focus on, on the, the individual line items there.
Okay.
We broke the salaries into two different buckets, the collective bargaining unit that represents the teachers and the non-collective bargaining unit that represents the administration department heads, you know, administrative staff and things like that. For the collective bargaining unit, where we end up on that is going to be dependent upon what's negotiated. So right now, this number is flat year over year. Obviously, that will change. It is flat with the expectation that we will be adding an English teacher, a special education teacher, and a reading specialist as additional positions that will be in the collective bargaining unit. So those are additions over what we have at this point in time. Salaries for the non-collective bargaining unit, Dr. McLeary talked about earlier, there's a number of positions that we're looking, adding in here. I would highlight the dean of students for the middle school as one of the positions that we're looking at adding in here. A human resources person that we're looking to add into here. An assistant to the special education department, a special education paraprofessional. Those are all positions that are being added in to the salaries of the non-collective bargaining unit.
Can I, can I ask, in, I, but on collective bargaining, does that indicate that there are like raises to come, or are you not allowed to say that because it's still a collective bargaining?
So what we did last year, in the same way we're doing it this year, is whatever gets negotiated, we will need to factor into this and then reexamine the budget.
Okay.
That's what we did last year, I believe in August. After we ratified the collective bargaining agreement, we had to reopen the budget and, you know, ratify the budget at that point in time as well.
It's a little higher because there's more-
It's higher because there's additional positions contemplated, but it is not, it's contemplating a 0% raise. I'm pretty confident the teachers are going to negotiate more than a 0%, you know, raise, so.
But that's just important to keep in mind when we're looking at the budget because the bottom line number is going to be higher. I mean, you know, whatever the bottom line number is, it's going to be lower, actually.
At the, at the end of the day, the bottom line number is going to be lower than what it stands at today.
What it's showing right now.
Because we don't have what that number is, you know, the salary number is going to be.
So let's suggest that that's a placeholder, that's a good way to want to-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
For the non, non, non-unit salaries, we're adding all these positions, but the number isn't. 2.559 to 2.6. Oh, that's 100, okay, sorry. Missing decimal place.
Substitutes, stipends, and then that gets us to our total salary number here. Then we have payroll taxes and fringe benefits. Payroll taxes, again, pretty formulaic-driven. It's social security for people that aren't covered by MTRS. It's Medicare for everybody that's, you know, that's in the, in the unit. This number will also adjust, I assume, when salaries for collective bargaining unit come through. Fringe benefits principally relates to our insurance programs, our healthcare and things like that. Forecasting a 5% increase is what, is what factored into that. So again, not, these are not small numbers, but they're driven off of head components like that, so that's where we end up.
Is that really based on any feedback from our insurance brokers?
It is. So if you'll notice over here, I made a note, slight increase of 5%.
Yeah.
That's, that's based on the feedback from our insurance broker about what we're going to be looking at next year. Again, we have to make an estimate here about how many people are going to be taking, you know, taking benefits. Some people use their school's benefits, some people take the school's benefits, some people get married during, you know, during the year. Things happen. We make, we make estimates here. We were low last year, right? So we were about $50,000 under what we had budgeted for. We've tried to get smarter this year and, you know, made our, made our estimate for this year is where we ended up on that.
So benefits are about 14% of payroll?
Well, divided by 76.
930 in benefits above payroll of 7.6?
About 15 or 16%. Yep.
Excellent.
Professional develop, where are we on time? We, we're, we're just about over. We're, we're almost there. Professional development, there's a component related to tuition reimbursement that is contractually mandated. Again, that could change as part of the collective bargaining. That's the tuition reimbursement piece, and then there's a professional development piece where we send people to programs or we bring programs in-house. Instructional supplies and equipment, you're going to see some consulting expenses here for sped consultants, coming down substantially as we add the full-time positions in that we talked about up above. Obviously, our spend on consultants will, you know, will go down. Classroom supplies, up modestly from where it was. Textbooks are actually down. Textbooks are on a cycle. It's just that this is where we are in the cycle. Again, this is built from a bottoms-up perspective. All the department heads weighing in on textbooks, looking at new courses and things like that, arriving at the textbook number. It's down from where we were the previous year. Coming into student program expenses, again, we had the income on the other side here, just some of the expenses coming through. You see those coming through here. Nutrition expense-
So, Tom?
Yes.
Question. So the, the club expense is 85, but the income is 125, and that's also the case for this year? Why do we take in more in club income than we have club expenses?
That's an excellent question. On the surface, the reason is because the stipends don't flow through here. So part of the stipend number that was up here, where'd my stipend number come from? My stipend number here. Part of that stipend number there is related to clubs, part of that stipend number there is also related to the coaches. We went to the trouble of breaking it out for the athletics. We haven't done that for the clubs.
Thank you.
Again, the clubs directionally are, you know, at break even is, you know, is what the, what the clubs are, and that's a mandate that the school is, you know, has given to the clubs. They're not meant to, you know, meant to be a profit center. Some of them had pretty substantial balances and the school is working to work those, you know, those balances down as we go forward as well.
Thank you.
Nutrition expense, we talked about, again, budgeting pretty much where we were this, this past year. This will be a self-correcting number based on the number of lunches that are bought at the end of the day. Athletic expenses, just again for visibility here, we wanted to break out the four kicks expense, since that's a pretty big expense. What we pay for physical education versus what we pay for, you know, athletic facilities. And then the athletic expense, we already touched on.
It seems like it's gone up a lot. Is it that much, like, are we that many more students? What?
Actually, I'm not sure where you're coming from. So I'm going to highlight this 340 number right here is what we're projecting for next year versus what we're projecting for this year, 333. So we're up $7,000 is, is what we're up on that number. Did I answer your question, Jess, or are you looking?
I don't know. I'm looking at the 83 number in 14 and 15, and then just two years later, is that 107,000 athletic facility, four kicks?
Again, I think we've added a number, I think we've added a number of sports since then, so I'm, I, I can't swear, but I don't know that we had lacrosse in previous years and things like that. So as we add additional programs, we use additional fields.
Okay.
That's right.
Four kicks. I'm, I'm making a decision, I'm making a-
We'll, we'll redact that from the table. Okay, so student transportation, student transportation expense includes the regional buses as well as field trip buses and athletic buses and things like that are all in the student transportation number. We broke out the athletic buses in the athletic summary for you to see it there, but that, that number is what's included in there. Our lease CAM and taxes, we're in a long-term lease, very straightforward that number, so that's where it comes from, pretty consistent with, you know, previous years. Facilities expenses going up just a little bit. We paint different, you know, buildings in the school on a cyclical basis. We're up for painting one of the buildings this coming year.
Inside.
Inside, yes, inside. That's where that expense is coming from. Utilities, pretty consistent with where we were previous years. Information technology spend, that's actually down. We also had consultant expense flowing through this line item in the 15, 16 year. Again, we've contemplated adding an IT resource in the non-collective bargaining unit, so that's one of the reasons that that's coming down. You're also going to see as we come down into some of these other areas, contemplating our legal expenses coming down substantially year over year. So that, as, as we hope that we see the end of the tunnel, the light at the end of the tunnel related to legal, we are optimistic that that number will be coming down. Depreciation expense, again, relates to long-lived assets. Computers, we depreciate over a three-year useful life. Improvements that we make to the facilities, I believe is over a 25-year useful life. The buses are over a seven-year useful life. It's all very formatic that goes through there. And then again, I promised that you would see the student transportation number and the in-kind MTRS numbers in there. So what that says, all at the end of the day, we are projecting net income of $200,000 is what we're projecting at this point in time. And again, that is independent of anything that happens through collective bargaining. So we are still projecting a surplus at this point in time for the 2016, 2017 year.
Why was it high in 14, 15?
Because the CAM charges?
Nope, not in 14 and 15. So the CAM charge, the CAM charge settlement is coming through in the 15, 16 number. Craig, I'd have to go back and I'm, I'm sure I explained that multiple times in the 14, 15 year, but I'd have to go back for, you know, the reasons why it was higher.
So, okay, we already know about the other money stuff, but that big, the CAM charge, the settlement, so does this tell us what we're spending that money on? Like, where does that go?
The CAM charges at this point in time are just going to our surplus. We haven't spent the CAM charges on anything, so just like any, any money that's left over at the end of the day goes, you know, goes to our surplus.
So this 200,000 surplus that we're projecting does not include that?
No, the, the surplus that we're projecting over here contemplates the CAM charges. Again, the CAM charge settlement happened in this calendar year, in the 15, 16 calendar year.
There's no balance here.
What's going to happen in the year?
Yeah. It's the budget.
And I think, Jess, one of the things that I learned is that, you know, the auditor had talked to us about having somewhere between six, eight, nine months of reserves, right? And so as we build these surpluses right now, it kind of ultimately it's up to the board and we'll decide what that number feels good to, right? So that's, so right now, anytime we end up with a surplus, that goes into that account and that protects us for six or seven months or whatever that number is, something go wrong?
I think right now we're about five months.
We're about seven months right now. We're about seven months right now.
Yeah, so the, the auditors said that's kind of the strike zone, but again, that's one.
And projected operating surplus for next year, would it match right at 100%?
That's correct. You're, you're spot on.
Yeah, it's not going to be a surplus.
Not a big one.
It's not going to be a surplus.
That doesn't include a teacher rate?
We will end up with that.
Right, so it's going to-
Wasn't the same.
I think you're getting soft, huh?
I know, right?
We also have a capital budget. So again, capital budget are items that last more than three years and have to be capitalized. So these are the items that we're looking to spend cash on and then will be depreciated over a number of years. So staff laptops, we replace the staff laptops every three years. $45,000 covers, you know, next year's staff laptops. We've got Chrome, a couple of Chromebook carts that we're looking to bring in, actually one for each of the buildings that we're looking to bring in, that I highlight there. Our computer lab, and then just some overhead projectors and some classroom furniture. So looking to spend $183,000 of our cash that we have on these capital items is what we're, we're looking for next year.
Second question. So this 183 is, is-
Not included.
These are not included, that's not included in the-
That is not included in that number, no.
So the second question I have is, so you mentioned some of these are replacements and some of these are new. So the Chrome, Chromebook carts, are those, are those new or are they replaced?
Those are not new.
I'm sorry?
Not new.
And, so none of this is new then? This is, this is only replacing what?
No, this is not new. The Chromebook carts are not new.
Not, not new.
The staff laptops are, you know, replacements. These five overhead projectors are not new. So we actually had classrooms that did not have overhead projectors in them. This classroom furniture is not, not new. Again, we replace classrooms on, you know, on a rotational basis. The computer lab, one lab gets updated every, you know, every couple of years, so that is, you know, that's not new. And then the switches and servers, those, those are just replacements of existing equipment.
So it looks like of this 43,000 is new, which is the Chromebook carts, and then the 13 for the math laptops, which is completing their laptop cart?
Tell me again which one you're looking at? The net news are Row 10, these Chromebook carts, these overhead projectors, and these overhead projectors, I would say, are the, the new items.
Well, the math laptops are needed to complete the laptop cart.
Oh, okay, so we bought a cart and we didn't fill it completely. I think the cart holds, for sake of argument, 30 laptops and we must have only bought 17 for it.
Okay.
So that would, yes, I guess you could consider that not new.
Thank you.
So what I'd be looking for at this point, well, first what I'd be looking for is if there's any other questions on the budget is what I'd be looking for. If there's not any other questions on the budget or the capital plan, I'd be looking for a vote to approve, you know, our budget at this point, subject to, you know, reevaluating the impact of the collective bargaining agreement when, when that's settled.
I'll second.
Great, all in favor? Okay. Oh, I, I don't-
I'm just going to say I don't-
Yeah, yeah, you can't vote on that. So Jess, you can vote, but everybody else can vote.
Then I just-
Was that, was there anyone that was against? No, okay. Voters have to be here. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you to the school.
Thank you to the school because actually in the three and a half years that I've been on this side, and today, this was the most transparency that I have seen with everything being laid out, and that was very, very helpful in understanding where this funding is going, so.
I want to mention that the interim business manager was very helpful in this regard as well.
She was great.
Okay, let's move on to each of our committee updates. Chris, you're up first.
Okay, so I don't see us hitting that $40,000 this year. Today, we've got total of just over 20 in, so we're tracking it about at where we were last year. We still have two, maybe three solicitations to go, follow-ups. We did the, the student phone-thon was postponed, but did take place this week. So we've done just about everything that we did last year. So in terms of inputs to the campaign, you know, we're, we're doing the same things, we're not achieving the same results. One of our, and you all received an email from me, is one of the things we're trying to do is improve our thank, thanking. And what I'm asking us as board members to do is each take a list of maybe 10 donors to call and thank them. It's really fun to do, especially if you get, you know, a tip, that if you get a machine, you start by saying, "Hi, this is Chris, I'm a trustee, you don't need to call me back." Once you say that into a voicemail, somebody feels like you gave them a five bucks. Just a message of thank you will give you scripts. I would like to thank Ed and Craig and Rick and Liz for stepping forward, already volunteered to take a list of names. I'll be hoping that others will do so as well. And there's also some help, some hope that if it starts to go around and people are getting thanked, it might be nice numbers that they want to give. The primary thing is we really want to improve how we thank people.
Chris, do you have a number on board participation in the-
Yes, we're not, we're at 11 out of 12 for a total of $34,000.
Chris, are you getting any feedback?
I'm sorry, what, what did I put in last year? Last year, last year we were 100% giving and about $8,000. And this year was? This year was 11 out of 12 and $4,000, 36.
I'm sure that 12 person's going to push us back up. They were, they were waiting to sign a really big check.
Chris, any idea why that number's down? Are you getting feedback along the way? People are declining to donate?
No, because we've not, this campaign has never been, it's always been, with the exception of the students, and I've not, I've not heard what, you know, what they heard from people, although I can't imagine they heard much. I'm not going to get. We don't get a lot of feedback because what we do is a series of email and print ads, sense of outgoing advertisements. We don't do direct-
I remember last year, last year at the parent roundtables, I think we were getting feedback, it was the time before we had our administration in place, and I think there was, folks were still trying to feel that how, trying to work through how they felt about the school, and they were trying to, kind of, they were wrestling with that. We also heard last year that they were seeking more, more focus as we go forward, right? So that we were having a annual campaign to do X or something like that. And I just, I wonder whether or not we should continue to pay attention to-
So we did hear that and we did respond to that in a couple of ways. One was, we did, during the campaign, we did a, so what's it being used for?
Yeah, good.
And we did actually target it for the, for the faculty innovation grants. But then this year, we looked at it and said, well, wait a second, what is an annual campaign supposed to be? It's supposed to be general operating support at the institute, right? And so in our letters, we said, you know, what does the money use for? And we say, it can be used for different things at different times, but at the basis, at the core, it's about having a healthy school.
But, okay.
And then we do some projects.
Thank you.
And I think probably for September, we should do a longer discussion on fundraising because the plan is to do this campaign again in November, we're trying to get it back into a full schedule. So I think a longer philosophical discussion in September would be-
You know, Chris, I just wanted to mention something. I don't know, it seems apropos, but I think sometimes people don't understand that charter schools, charter public schools and the traditional district public schools don't operate on a level playing field. And one of the biggest ways in which they don't is that the traditional district schools are eligible for the state's school building authority funds. These are millions of dollars that go toward establishing a, a fine facility. So the charter schools aren't eligible for that. They do receive a small amount of money per student that go toward facilities, but it's nothing close to what the district schools are eligible for. And so as a result, the, one of the biggest challenges that charter schools face, just like any school, is having a fine, permanent, funded facility. That's really one of the greatest long-term challenges. And I think people don't understand that charter schools face a significant monetary challenge that they face.
I think they don't. It's hard for us to articulate that at this point because of our particular real estate situation.
But it, it's really the future that you're looking at. So, you know, when people say, well, you know, you're, you're trying to establish a surplus, yes, you're trying to safeguard, you know, seven months ahead, but you're also trying to get to the point where any self-respecting bank will look at you and be able to help you build a building that you really want. And that's something, I, I mean, you can't, I can't be underestimated. Like, we, we had an educator exchange today and we invite the surrounding public schools to come and learn about us and our best practices and share. And a fellow who came from the Aspet Valley Regional School pointed out to me when we were talking this morning that they just, they, they got $62 million to re-renovate their entire school in the last few years. That, that's something no charter school in the state would ever see any little bit of. It's important to kind of-
And yet we can't target the fundraising to what is this money going to? It's going to and down to get a building, because that's not where we are. So that is, it's-
I know.
Please don't give the money.
I mean, that's the big picture.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or a card?
All right. Thank you, Chris. I put a note to fundraising for students. Education committee?
So we met on the 14th of April, continued working on our presentation that we have to bring to the board at the next board meeting on the 26th of May. We'll be meeting again on the 12th, not on the 19th as originally scheduled. We shifted it back one week and then, because of the AMSA Arts Night, and so we're meeting on the 12th of this coming month. And that's my update.
Thank you. Ed, governance?
Two main items. We met this past month, I think also on, on the 12th there. And the first item you have in your package is a new policy, which we need to review and take a vote on at the end. This is for policy A106, executive director, professional development policy. And in essence, what it really says is that we believe in the process of continuous learning drives excellence in administration, support, services, teaching for AMSA. That process is under the direction of the ED for approving the budget as well as administering the professional development initiatives or programs. And in particular, there's one sentence in the second paragraph, the last sentence, which spells out specifically for the ED, any professional development for the executive director with an expense greater than 2,500 or more than three consecutive school days requires board chair approval. So in essence, that's what we've tried to put together here, so we actually have a policy that describes and makes it tangible, what we sort of view as appropriate, the appropriate process for professional development.
Was that the reason for this policy was that one sentence?
No, I, I think that was part, a big driver of it.
Okay.
But I think we also wanted to have something tangible in place so that when the board was also connected to sort of knowing what was happening from a professional development standpoint, who the authorizing individuals were. That was a big part of it.
I actually have a question regarding that sentence. To me, it's kind of vague on whether it's like- To me, it's kind of vague on whether it's like one individual class type of thing or a total of the twenty-five hundred expenditure regarding needing the board chair approval. The three days consecutive, that, that makes sense, but it just says that with the expense of probably twenty-five hundred, is that the year? Is that one class? Could they do four classes or?
You're talking about a single event.
We were talking about a single event.
Wait, I would just, I would actually suggest wording.
Maybe you said any professional development event for the ED with expense greater than twenty-five hundred or more in three consecutive days. So that, because when you say any professional development, Scott's right, I mean, that, that could be the entire year's worth.
I'm with you, I agree with you. So, so what's the, what was your wording again that we're proposing?
Just put in the bit, development, events.
Okay, got it.
Or activity.
Choose your word. Okay, great, thank you.
You need a vote on this?
Yeah.
Yes, I was gonna say, can we vote?
What word do you, what word do you want to use?
Well, I just wrote in event.
Okay, so I make a proposal that we adopt the ED professional development possible, policy, with the addition of the word event?
Okay, just ask one, two things. One, is this, I don't know where these values came from, are they just judgmental calls or are they based on some standard?
Well, we had some discussion about it, and then I think, Tom, this, the numbers were run by you also, probably.
Yeah, it was finance committee, we talked about it, finance committee, but it was really just judgment.
But I guess I want to, I'm sorry, go ahead, you, you had two, two points you wanted to make.
And then the second was, is there an annual camp?
Right.
That's exactly what I was.
That was what Scott was, that was what Scott was getting to. So we could have twenty-two thousand dollar events that wouldn't trigger this, but I don't think we're actually suggesting that we'd be comfortable with Dr. McCleary spending forty thousand dollars on professional development.
Right, but that would show up in the budget.
Yeah.
So we could felt that the cumulative would show up.
We would, we would check it that way.
Yeah, the budget would have been exceeded if the, if the cap.
But the cumulative budget is for everybody, right? Not just the ED? Yeah, yeah, yes, the cumulative budget. So the cumulative budget, not the Dr. McCleary, do that, could be spent by the ED sending himself to some, something average?
Yeah, I'm comfortable we would pick that up.
Exactly.
I'm comfortable we would pick that up.
We're saying the ED has the authority to manage, to control the budget.
You know what, I think the executive director belongs in the classroom or in the school.
I couldn't agree with you more. I want to say for the record, I have not spent one dollar on professional development for myself to shoot. Nor do I plan to.
Okay, so we, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, we do have motion, is there a second?
Is a second it?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of Dr. McCleary's? Ask him, I love him. All votes. Send a motion. I was trying to get a tip from the committee, he made the motion, walked.
I made the motion, Chris is second.
Thank you.
All right, the second item that really took the majority of the meeting, we had a conference call with a guest on the phone who was the executive director for an organization called the National School Public Relations Association. And this falls under the, the board has a, as the governors, has a goal for improving communications within the board. And we looked at this sort of holistically, not just the board, but also there's some potential application here, and some benefits that maybe could be leveraged for the school. So we had that individual on the phone to do a conference call with us. Background information on the organization was sent out, started somewhere, I think around in the nineteen eighties, or at least the, one of the things that they do is they provide onsite assessments of the current schools or school districts, which is usually what they work with larger entities than ours. Their communication plans with the intent to help those school districts or individual schools improve their communication. And that process is one where they target focus groups primarily, your administration, faculty, community, parents, your key stakeholders. And they'll do onsite interviews, collect that information, gather it, analyze it, and then come back with a recommendation relative to a communication, areas for improvement within the current school communication system. And that whole process takes about two months, and they have, again, been at this for, for quite a while, and so this is something that they advertise as a service. That process, even though we did not get into a discussion around cost, would more than likely be several thousand dollars, because they did give a figure for school districts, which is much larger than what we're dealing with, and that number was multiple thousands, ten to fifteen thousand, we'll say. So if we were to get in discussions just for our building, of course, it would be several thousand at least, thinking this. So one of the other options that they also talked about was a organization that they partner with, which has a sort of self-assessment survey. And that survey is called Scope, which is School Communications Performance Evaluation. And that is, is again, really sort of a self-assessment survey where they would then, which they have sent us a link, which gives us access to the survey questions and information, which we would then deploy. And they targeted for sort of three focus groups being parents and families, faculty and staff, and community. And would be similar to their onsite survey, except for the fact that this is sort of a self-assessment. That process takes about two weeks, where they take the survey responses, they analyze those, compare them to sort of best practices, benchmarks that they have in place. And then they come back with recommendations, and that process is about two weeks or so, and would be maybe a hundred or two from a cost standpoint. So where we saw it came to in the conference call was, maybe we walk before we run, and that might be a good place to start. And so they've sent that information for us to consider. We haven't made any decisions at this point, but at our next meeting, we'll be talking further about it and see if this is a path that we want to walk down. So it was a very good call. Liz joined us from a parent rep standpoint, so a lot of different inputs sharing around communication and it was good dialogue.
Good, so, unfortunately, I couldn't, just playing devil's advocate, considering communication is such a critical issue, should we run rather than walk?
Well, I think we'll, I think it's-
Not to say we shouldn't evaluate, not, not to say we shouldn't evaluate that item, but I would, I would err on your right.
Yeah, fair, fair question. And I think we'll look a little bit more with this scope evaluation is what they sent us, and, and basically just sort of, you know, raise the question you just did, which is, do we want to start here? Do we want to just dive in? Do we think that this particular company, and it doesn't have to be this company, there may be others out there that do something similar, but do we want to walk that path and give some actual, do some bidding and get some costs and, you know, run as opposed to walk? So I think that'll be a discussion topic for the next meeting, so I'm glad you raised it.
It's mostly about internal communications, both of the options, or is it also external?
Well, what they do from a service standpoint, external being the community, so they offer that as well as anything from internal to the school itself, the administration. I think Dr. McCleary, the, the date that we had the governors meeting, I believe you also had a parent tea, I think it was, or a parent coffee, so it was a conflict, it was something happening, so it was a conflict, yeah. So, but basically, we sort of opened it up to the full gamut of not just board communications, but school communications, and so I think all of those things are on the table internally and externally from a community standpoint.
I think this firm's primary focus is that, is public relations for school districts. And so a lot of it is on, you know, if you think about it, you know, we should run before, we should hurry up and run, because we had all the communications probably we've had. And, you know, we haven't really had, you know, really bad happen. And I think one of the things that the-
From a external?
Right. We have not had the disaster, we have not had the stealing, we have not had, you know, assaulted, you know, the kinds of things that-
Cause to be in the press and the people outside.
And the cause pure and upward. They, I think they, they, they approach it all as a piece, but they come from an external place.
I think that's right, I mean, just by the name, yeah, just go public relations association, yeah.
I would also caution that, that we don't get survey, survey out.
That was actually one of the things I-
You know, seriously, I mean, I've never, I mean, this is, this, yes, let's, let's, you know, let's just gather the data and let's take action. You know, we don't need a survey, you know, I mean, I, it's no-
Fair point, we've done a lot of surveys, but I guess the key is, as you said, we need the data. So we gotta collect it and enact on it, so.
I'm sure.
All right.
Yep, that's all for good.
Thank you, Ed. All right, that's the end of our main agenda or open session. For upcoming agenda topics, I think, it's just sort of our standard things, I do have that CPAC, we'll be giving a presentation in May, and the Ed committee will be getting their recommendations in May, so I've got that on the topic for May. And then for June, just so we are all aware, we have renewals for trustees who are, whose terms are expiring and also officer elections. And at that time, we will also vote in for the parent and faculty reps as well. Well, is PTO going to do a vote for?
I don't know, I'm gonna reach out to Julie and I'll let you know.
Yeah.
So just going back to May and the parent survey or the family survey.
Oh, yeah, and we'll have the results in parent's name.
Can we get that ahead of time so that we can, you know, go through that ahead of time, have some questions and things like that, and that we're not seeing it for the first time then? I agree.
I think the window closes, as I said, the first week in May, and so then Panorama will send out, send the results, and then we can, they'll give us, I think they'll probably be happy to give me some advice on how to, you know, interpret it, but, you know, it can be distributed to everybody.
So, so one quick item on that is, I know when we did the faculty survey, we had Panorama basically separate the questions that were Likert-type questions versus the open response. And so that when we distributed it, we could distribute the Likert-type questions, the rating questions, and not, and basically then redact the other ones. So we want to make sure they separate those.
I agree.
Once we distribute it, it becomes necessary to publish it externally.
Well, is there another addition of the faculty survey, is that the new agenda, or what does that have? Another one we need to check again. But I don't think that will be ready to be recorded out in May. All right, just a quick check on meeting effectiveness, do people feel like we covered this, where we went, where we went with some present?
And so where did we go over?
So overall, we, we hit the time. We spent a little more time on budget than we spent a little less on call stories, so we made time.
I think having a timer is a great thing.
So having a timer is a great thing.
Well, I think setting the expectation of being able to help.
This is also just showing that I'd be slightly better at budgeting the time, because when I first started doing this, I had no idea how much time does that reach. That's how positioned to me. I mean, we were, we were talking. All right, good. So I will entertain the suggestion to adjourn to executive session to discuss litigation as well as what to targeting, strategies for determining what to target more than, especially detrimental to profit.
Someone?
Okay, Chris is the main agenda.
Second.
And Mike's second, and we did a roll call.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
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 Great, and I will just make a note that Dr. McCleary is invited to join up, and actually, Tom Azarito will be invited to join us as well, so for a part of the, for executive session, we're discussing litigation and all the content that lots of people are.
Sort of the other, yeah, seven, we got the grant. A lot of times we're certain, like, people have that.
Yeah.